Good morning, it's a pleasure to be here this morning and open the meeting in the absence, physical absence of Bill Lames. He's away, but he's here on the phone. He's asked me to convene the meeting, and so I'm going to do that. And we'll begin with the observation of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution, with liberty and justice for all. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes, any additions or deletions or questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. Going to our treasurer's report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have receipts on January 30th and 31st of $2,523,040.15. Brought us to a total cash of $2,727,739.72. Our expenditures this week were $2,339,080.8. Our tax claim is $168,379.52. That leaves us a balance of $220,280.12. Now, we did have to start our, well, we loaned from our reserve, so it took $500,000 to help cover expenses. I still do have some money set aside for the next one or two payrolls over above that, but we had our insurance enter payroll this week, and that's why it was so high.
Seek a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, so. I should ask Michelle Letz, are you okay with this? You're okay with that? I just want to make sure you're all right.
Michelle Edes, Director of Human Resources.
Leanne Schenk, Human Resources Assistant.
Moving on to personnel transactions under resignations and terminations. Elizabeth Youngs, First Deputy in the Controller's Office, retirement effective April 7th, with her last working day being April 6th. Christopher Kreitzer, Telecommunicator, resignation effective January 28th. Dylan Shell, Telecommunicator, resignation effective January 18th. Tammy Fidler from NLPN, resignation effective January 31st. And Ashley Nguyen, Casual Call Developmental Assistant, resignation effective January 17th.
I'll so move to accept the resignations and terminations with special attention to the longevity and service of Elizabeth Young of 31 years. That's wonderful. I wish you well.
Second, Bill?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Under changes to status, transfers, and promotions, I have a motion to approve Warden Robert Carnes' recommendation to reclassify one of his current General Clerk C positions to a medical billing clerk position at a grade seven on the non-union salary chart, effective February 25th, 2018, and this was previously discussed through the legislature as I just grabbed it for the first.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Warden Carnes' request. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Eric Fowler, Promotion from 911 Supervisor in EMA to Deputy Director of 911 in EMA at the rate of $2,386.04 by weekly, effective February 12th. And Isad Morejo, Change of Status from Casual Call Developmental Assistant at Renova to Full-Time Developmental Assistant at Renova, no change in his rate, effective February 12th.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those changes, any question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Under other transactions, President Judge Tewok would like to hire Richard Huber, Certified Interpreter, at the rate of $2,192.31 by weekly, effective February 20th. Warden Carnes would like to hire Amber Butler as a Medical Billing Clerk at the rate of $898.72 by weekly, effective February 26th. President Judge Tewok would like to hire Anthony Frost as a probation officer one at the rate of $1,581 by weekly, effective February 5th. Renova would like to hire Yvonne Baptiste as a Full-Time Developmental Assistant at the rate of $11.56 per hour with a 45 cent shift differential, effective February 12th. And Building Security would like to hire Anita Spatz as a Part-Time Door Monitor at the rate of $10.33 per hour, effective February 12th. And I have a correction, Amber Butler at the prison, the medical billing clerk to rehire.
I make a motion to approve those hiring.
I'll second, I do have a question. Not wanting to assume anything, the Certified Inspector's, um, interpreter?
Yes.
Interpreter's specialty is Spanish?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Any other questions? It's been moved and seconded, any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Moving on to Salary Board, Motion to approve all the transactions previously read plus the following. These are all incremental increases, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the prison, all to the rate of $14.79 per hour, all effective February 25th, 2018. Franklin Camacho, Brandon Franklin, Corey McKinney, Jonathan Medina, Adam Philippi, and Dakota Weidmer.
So moved.
Second.
Take the motion and second to accept those changes. Question or comment?
It will.
Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
In the mandated conference seminars, Karen Pass from Domestic Relations would like to attend the 33rd Annual Spring DRS Director's Meeting in State College, May 14th, 15th, and 16th, with lodging mileage and meals reimbursement mandated by BCSE. Tara Fankovic and Tiffany Sherman and Sarah Shuck from Domestic Relations would like to attend the P-A-C-S-E-T-I training in Harrisburg, March 28th and 29th, mileage and meals parking reimbursement mandated by BCSE. And Bob Dowd, Joe Morales from EMA would like to attend the PMA in-service training in Harrisburg, February 7th and 8th, meals reimbursement mandated by PMA. Joe Morales, John Wilson, and Gary Verna from EMA would like to attend the hazardous weather and flooding preparedness in Harrisburg, May 22nd and 23rd, mileage, meals, tolls reimbursement mandated by PMA. Eric Fowler from EMA would like to attend the following two trainings, New Tech Officer Training in Harrisburg, March 28th, with mileage, meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement mandated by PSP. And mandatory TAC training in Hershey, April 10th, mileage, meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement mandated by PSP. Hadi Tingjen from MHDI would like to attend the ODP Quality Management Certification Class in Mechanicsburg, April 11th and 12th, mileage, meals, tolls reimbursement, 12 credits mandated by ODP. John Singletary from Sheriff's Office would like to attend the Instructor Course in Harrisburg, April 23rd, 24th, and 25th, $897 total registration fee mandated by PCCP. Robert Meese from Planning Department would like to attend the PCCA Symposium in King Prussia, March 28th, $65 total registration fee, tolls reimbursement, six credits mandated by Department of Labor and Industry. Samantha Schesny and Christopher Fry from Probation Services would like to attend the sharpen your edge perception of danger in Lidditz, March 12th, meals reimbursement, 7.5 credits mandated by PBPP. Susan Christner from Probation Services would like to attend the New Tech Officer Training in Harrisburg, March 28th, meals and parking reimbursement, six credits mandated by PSP. Brittany Kernig, Susan Putt, and Bonnie Warner from Probation Services would like to attend the organization skills for the overwhelmed in Harrisburg, April 4th, $238.80 total registration fee, meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by PSP. Carla Arnold and Susan Putt from Probation Services would like to attend the developing your emotional intelligence in Harrisburg, March 19th, $119.20 registration fee, meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by PBPP. Brenda San Diego and Susan Putt from Probation Services would like to attend Breaking Bad Communications Habits in Harrisburg, March 2nd, $159.20 registration fee, meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by PBPP. Susan Christner from Probation Services would like to attend the 2018 Clean Training in Hershey, April 10th, meals reimbursement, four credits mandated by JCGC. Brenda San Diego and Jody Little and Amanda Ramos from Probation Services would like to attend Managing Multiple Priorities and Projects in Lancaster, March 29th, $178.80 registration fee with meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by PBPP. Janet Wolf from Probation Services would like to attend the Extraordinary Administrative Professional in York, February 20th, $59.60 registration fee, meals reimbursement, six credits mandated by PBPP. Brenda San Diego, Bonnie Warner, Amanda Ramos from Probation Services would like to attend the CPC MS 2018 Winter Workshop in Bethlehem, February 15th, meals reimbursement, two and a quarter credits mandated by PBPP. Deborah Zachman, Carla Arnold, Jody Little, and Susan Putt from Probation Services would also like to attend the CPC MS 2018 Winter Workshop in Reading, February 16th, with meals reimbursement, two and a quarter credits mandated by PBPP. And Susan Miller would like to attend the CPC MS 2018 Winter Workshop in Exton on March 8th with meals reimbursement, two and a quarter credits, PBPP. And Jermaine McQueen from Probation Services would like to attend the OC Training in Lancaster, March 29th, meals reimbursement, four credits mandated by JCGC.
Seek a motion to approve the mandated concert dependent?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions on any of those requests? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved.
Under requested, Shannon McMinn from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the Aging Mastery Program in Lebanon, March 20th and 27th, April 3rd, 10th, 17th, and 24th, and May 1st, 8th, 15th, and 22nd. No registration fee, mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that Area Agency on Aging request. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Joe Morales, Gary Verna, Jason Weichel, and Carl Wensler from EMA would like to attend the 2018 Three Mile Island Training Day at Mannheim, February 3rd, no registration fee with mileage and meals reimbursement.
Make a motion to approve the requested conference, the TMI.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that training, any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
And Kirk Giuliani from the Sheriff's Office would like to attend the NFDD Instructor Certification Course in Valmonte, April 19th and 20th, $470 total registration fee with lodging and meals reimbursement.
And this is budgeted sheriff and a need for the office, correct?
I'm sorry?
Kirk Giuliani is budgeted and a need for the office.
Yes, it is, it's budgeted, through the training budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that certification course, any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so ordered. Thank you. Gordon?
If I may ask you.
Yes, sir.
Very quickly, Eric Fowler, Deputy Director of 911.
Yes.
The Director of 911, who would that be? I don't know what their organizational map looks like then. So I don't know if they have an EMA Director, then a Director of the 911. Is Bob the Director of 911? Bob's the Director, Eric's the Director, is the Deputy Director of 911.
Okay.
So they're, yeah, they're having sort of category, old deputies, is correct.
And Joe Morales is the Deputy Director of EMA.
How many Deputy Directors are there?
Two now.
Okay. There's a bit of restructuring going on there from last year's budget that we talked about.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So that'll be the last part of that.
Yeah, he may talk about that this morning, actually.
He's coming in. Name change on the rest of it. All right, we have our Director of our Elections, Michael, would you like to proceed?
Michael Anderson, voter registration, excuse me. Good morning. I am here today to ask the Board of Elections to formally approve the request that I had made as far as the major political parties here in Lebanon County, which is the Democratic and Republican Party. Those are the two that have qualified on the candidate list for the major political party.
Motion?
I'll make a.
Move, move, move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Democratic and Republican Parties as presented. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved. Yes, Gordon?
I do have questions concerning what the Bureau of Elections is doing regarding the congressional races and what may or may not change in a, in a remapping congressional districts. What is the absolute latest time that you would be able to make any kind of changes?
Good question. Basically, at this point, with the guidance of the Department of State, we are going forward with the election calendar we have now. So what that entails for us locally at this point is the only petitions that we have are handing out and will accept in my office at this point is the local Democratic Committee members, that's the, that will be on the ballot for us. Everything else petition-wise will be through the Department of State. They have issued a memo, I don't know if you saw it, I actually brought them with me, and I do believe I passed this on to the Board as well, but I do have copies if you need to see one. That, they have basically instructed us to, to go on as normal, and that whenever the petition process, which starts on February 13th, commences, they will hand out those, those petitions for every office except the congressional district. And basically, what they're doing at this point is they're in a wait-and-see mode. Obviously, the, the State Supreme Court has issued their ruling and has given the General Assembly and the Governor deadlines that they have said that they need to meet. So at this point, with that ruling, there really is no congressional districts until they get remapped, or until another court order comes down changing what the State Supreme Court does. So to answer your question, we're kind of waiting for guidance from them, since everything goes through the Department of State for these, these candidates and these positions that will be on the ballot. As far as a deadline, the only deadline that we've been given so far is what that has come back down from the State Supreme Court, which is the dates that they have been given. I can tell you that a lot of us election directors are worried just because the clock will be ticking, and obviously, we have to program ballots and get everything ready. But the longer it goes, you know, I don't know how that will, you know, will play out. But I'm hopeful there'll be some type of resolution, either remaps, or we'll redo what we have now. So we're kind of waiting for the Department of State with, you know, how we'll proceed going forward. They have the ability to change the election schedule, at this point, they're telling us to get changed.
And what's at stake in Lebanon County is that the ballots for the 6th and the 15th could have changed by precinct.
Absolutely, it could change, you know, we could have more, we could have less, we could have the same, it all depends on what.
Or a new congressional district.
Yeah, and that's one of the, you know, that you hear a lot about, is it's a candidate that thought they'd been run, you know, in the 15th, may not be in the 15th anymore.
No longer lives in the district.
Yeah, so, you know, that's one of the items that, you know, that they're dealing with. I can tell you that we've had requests in my office for, like, walking lists and things like that for the districts as they were before, we'll honor those. So I do have a gentleman ask for walking lists for the, I think it was the 15th congressional district, so, you know, we have that CD made and we'll do that, but we do let them know, make sure they're aware of the fact that this is all kind of in limbo, it could change, you could end up getting a list that end up not being where it will be in the end, probably just not.
Michelle Letz had a question.
Yes, I'd just like to verbalize that there are a couple of options here. One is the court and/or the legislature meet the deadline and the election goes on as normal. But the other option, there's two other options, one is they extend the date for all the offices, but the third option, which I think needs the most attention is that if they go on with all the other races and then hold a special election for Congress, there is a large sum of money that is going to come from counties that is not in our budget, and I hope and pray that the state will reimburse us for those additional expenses.
Yeah, and it even goes beyond that, because then you're talking about the resources of, you know, trying to find, making sure our local places will be available on those dates to be polling locations, then you're also talking about, you know, recruiting and having poll workers, will you be able to man those for that special election, along with obviously the cost that will be involved with that, you're right. So that, to me, worst-case scenario would be.
I agree that I.
Would be to have a third election in this calendar, obviously, even moving the primary election would be a.
Has some of those same.
Yeah, so I'm hopeful that there will be a resolution that will work for everybody that if we end up keeping the election calendar the way it happened.
I just, I didn't know if your state association was actively listing the different negatives.
Yeah, they're working actually with C-CAD as well, but, yeah, letting them know exactly kind of how we feel as far as not only just the cost, and, you know, and any time you have, it works, not any time, or all the time, but a lot of times when you have special elections, it will return out plummets. So that's something else I think that they need to think about, but yes, those concerns are definitely being, DOS is very well aware of them, but, you know, making sure, leaving the Governor's office, because the Governor at this point has, you know, said about, you know, standing even the date of when these deadlines will be met as far as the remap, that that's even pushing into when the timeframe for the petition process happens. So then I would have to be hooked that, and then be kind of a rush to get the ballots right.
And if I remember correctly, and I'd like an update on this if it's changed, the PEBs have to be held for a certain length of time in case there's a challenge, so we don't have enough PEBs to have new ones for a special election.
You would have to basically rewrite them, I mean, you would have to have it reprogrammed and then rewrite them, you'd erase them and rewrite them, I mean, there's no way, you wouldn't have, yeah.
But the point is, we can't erase them.
No, we have a number.
Because of our challenges that can happen.
Right, we have a number of PEBs that we would have, so we would almost have to buy new ones if you're talking about not being able, if you would have to keep a certain election on a set of PEBs, you would have to purchase a whole new set if you're talking about, yes, correct.
And I just want to make sure the state hears and knows what we as counties have to face.
Yes, yeah, well, we are definitely, the association is definitely making people aware of that, the Department of State, one of the good things with the Department of State is they're very good about communicating with our association, and so they definitely are aware. Sometimes getting that information to the Governor's office and the General Assembly sometimes.
Thank you, I just felt the need to hear, so thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
You're at election board.
Thank you, Michael.
We're going to adjourn the election board and resume the regular meeting. Sure, it's been moved, Bill, second to adjourn the.
Yes, yes, second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning. So, you'd like to introduce yourselves and then you may proceed.
Absolutely, I'm Bob Dowd, Director of Urban San Andreas. Gary Verna, Hazmat Chief. Well, I have it, Grants Hazmat Report and then Agency. Okay, this is the first grant we're here to discuss, is the annual EMPG Emergency Management Performance Grant. It subsidizes four positions within our departments. We are applying for $150,77,117,96. Once this is submitted, we will issue a formal grant, we'll bring that to you for decision.
Seek a motion to approve the request of that grant?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any question or comment? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
The next grant is the, I should just report, it's a report, sorry, HMRF report. It's a Hazardous Materials Emergency Response Preparation Report. Each year, PMA requires us, as in Hazmat or LEPC, to submit a report. And this report weighs heavily on the HMRF grant, which is the Hazardous Material Response Fund Grant, and what we get with that. So, a couple of areas of interest, as I wrote, Mr. Dowd, 43 of our facilities in Lebanon County have sulfuric acid, which is an extremely hazardous substance, which requires a planning, a plant, an off-site plant. 22 facilities have chlorine, and 29 facilities in the county have ammonia. So those three are the most chemicals we have in this county that are extremely hazardous. So, just some points I wanted to. Is there a question?
Nope.
Do you need that to be accepted, or is it just adjourned? I make a motion to accept the EMPG Hazardous Material Response Report.
This is the second one.
Okay, just the hazardous materials report, does.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we accept Gary's report, any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Third item we're here to discuss is a full request to change Lebanon County Emergency Management to the Lebanon County Department of Emergency Services. And this request is to better reflect what we do as a department. Emergency management is just one piece, other pieces are 911, Hazmat, and all of our ethical services we provide to the public safety when we can. All these things are parallels and definitely are important, directed to the emergency management piece. Emergency management will become a barrel underneath the Department of Emergency Services.
This is becoming a trend in your business?
Yes, the majority of the other counties, actually, of the other fifth-class counties, seven of them use a Department of Emergency Services or Department of Public Safety here. Sorry, six of them.
Is there any, well, Gordon, you may have a question or so, but we'd like to get a motion on the table to consider it, and then we can have discussion, how's that?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Director's request for the name change for the department.
I'll second it, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
I'd like to know, has an estimate been done of what it will cost to change the name in terms of signage and badges and whatever?
Our signage is limited to what's inside the building at this point, which is one sign outside the door, our letterhead is all electronic, print as needed. The majority of the cost is going to be business cards at about $150. Uniforms are going to stay the same for you? Uniforms aren't changing, and emergency management is not going away, that's not only a legally required piece of what we do, it's a very important piece, so our uniforms are going to stay the same, and it'll be a gradual progression.
Okay, gradual transition, okay. I just wondered if that was something that was going to be a big change all at once. Okay, all right, thank you.
Just a minute or two on the new structure, Gordon, we did.
not only a, a legally required piece of what we do, it's a very important piece. So our uniforms are going to stay the same. It'll be a gradual progression.
Gradual transition, okay. I just wondered if that was something that was going to be a big change all at once. Okay. All right, thank you.
Just a, a minute or two on, on the new structure. Gordon, we did, uh, we have Eric at that position approved this morning, and Gordon had a question, so I thought maybe if you were just to elaborate.
Absolutely. The intent is to have a second deputy director, his responsibility is now specifically 901, um, and then the original deputy director is now specifically EMA. It allows those individuals to become subject matter experts in their area instead of requiring them to understand everything. The goal is to have those people review our current programs and then bring us up to compliance with current, you know, methods and procedures.
And you are the director, and could you name the two assistant directors with their positions?
Yes, Joe Morales will be deputy director of EMA and Eric Bell will be deputy director of 901.
Thank you.
And your intent is to, is for Joe Morales to become a certified, uh,
Yes.
By PMA certified emergency planner as well?
Yeah, emergency coordinator. He is, uh, one training program away from having that.
Anything else? Not, we'll, uh, take a vote on the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign, so moved. All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Kelly, just one thing, second thing, so while I just walk through my few things here.
All right?
Yep. All right, um, the first thing I have is, um, some board appointments. First being for the Children and Youth Advisory Board. Um, recently the board nominated and is forwarding the appointment of Melissa Landry as a member. She's the chief financial director of Stritch Insurance, have been foster parents through Lancaster County Children and Youth years ago, um, and then ultimately adopted a sibling, and, um, they're requesting that she be appointed as a new member of the board until December twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second bill?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Sorry, I didn't hear the motion.
To approve Melissa Landry, uh, to the advisory board for, uh, James, James, uh, Children and Youth.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that. I just didn't hear the motion. I'm sorry.
It's been moved and seconded.
Good, I'll second it.
Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Close, same sign, so moved.
The second being a reappointment to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board of Amy Leonard, who is, uh, as I think you all know, attorney with Henry Beaver and would be serving under term. To twenty twenty-two.
All right, um, go ahead.
You're good.
Yep, go ahead, Bill.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Amy Leonard to that position.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and I'll comment that she does a very good job in that capacity, uh, as a volunteer. Any, uh, comments beyond that? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign, so moved.
Uh, next I have, uh, our second of two farm agreements that we maintain each year. This is a farm lease agreement with Lauren Horning of Fontana Avenue, Lebanon. This is a very small piece of the, um, property that is maintained by Community Action Partnership at the Bridge House, but for Mr. Horning to sort of square off the field that he farms, it's, uh, just about an acre that he farms that is actually county land, so there's a hundred and fifty dollar revenue to be due.
So moved to approve the farm lease with Lauren Horning at one hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved that lease. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Uh-huh.
Close, same sign, so moved.
Having an agreement between the Kelly and the Pennsylvania District Attorney's Institute. This is, this is a SABAN maintenance and service agreement. SABAN is the statewide automated victim information and notification system, and this provides victims with notification of when, um, defendants or convicted, uh, have been either incarcerated or being released or any other activity that might be of interest to the victim, uh, is, is maintained in this database and then communicated by our victim witness department. Uh, one change this year is there's no law for a maintenance agreement charge. So, the district attorney's offices have paid a small charge to be part of it, but they've now waived that. So, you're okay on that SABAN maintenance agreement?
I make a motion to approve the SABAN maintenance program for the district attorney's office.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions? Comment?
Here's, maybe one comment, but I don't want to confuse things. It's, it is a maintenance agreement. They waived the fee. The maintenance agreement then consists of, of our responsibilities to the, to the system, being, you know, inputting data, verifying and so on, so clarify.
Okay. I weigh for motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Close, same sign, so moved.
And the next one I have is the supervision funds agreement between the county and the Pennsylvania Board of Probation and Parole, and this is the agreement that provides for the flow of supervision funds that are paid by defendants here, by, by those being supervised by adult probation. Uh, those funds are paid here, they go up to the state and a portion of them then are sent back for the, for use by the courts at their discretion for probation per elective. So this is the annual agreement for that, for the responsive flow.
So moved to approve the supervision on, for parole.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the supervision fund request. Paperwork. Any question or comment? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Close, same sign, so moved.
And lastly, I have a proclamation for the Boy Scout Expo recognizing, uh, the anniversary of the Boy Scouts since February eighth of nineteen ten, and also declaring February fifth through the ninth of twenty eighteen as Boy Scout Week, and they will be holding their expo at the Lebanon Valley Mall, uh, starting Monday.
Make a motion to adopt the proclamation, uh, establishing Boy Scout Week.
So, uh, second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any question or comment? All in favor of the proclamation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign, so moved. Before Kelly comes in. Sheriff, would you mind sharing the, the good news story of Forrest? Yeah, that'd be great.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bruce Klingler, Sheriff of Lebanon County. Uh, just a point of information, good news. Uh, on Monday, this past Monday, I was notified by the president of the Lebanon Lodge Number Forty-two Fraternal Order of Police, President Scott Bowman, that one of my deputy sheriffs, Sergeant Bradley K. Seifert, was awarded the Lebanon County Police Officer of the Year Award. Out of over a hundred police officers in Lebanon County, law enforcement, uh, one of my men was given this award. And it's a, it was just a really good thing for, for me as far as knowing that it's one of our deputy sheriffs and he's one of our county employees. And I just wanted to share this with you this morning. So it's good news to, to put out there.
We appreciate that, Sheriff.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to both you and Bradley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi.
Those aren't Eagles, Eagles colors, are they? Just relax and, uh, you're wearing, is that Notre Dame or you're expecting Eagles colors today, but go ahead.
I should have my green and white on, right?
Go ahead, Kelly. Would you introduce yourself? Bill Ames is, uh, here by way of conference call.
Oh, okay.
Good morning, good morning, Kelly.
Good morning. Did you enjoy your vacation?
Yeah.
Great. Anyhow, um, Kelly Witham, um, Director of the Downtown Lebanon Business Improvement District. Um, I am here today to discuss the, um, Main Street application. Um, DCED came back with, uh, some recommendations. Uh, one was, uh, they wanted to see a little more exact budgeting, um, and they wanted to not just have well wishes, uh, letters of, um, support for programming, but they wanted to see letters of financial support. In the budget, it was stated that, uh, a manager director would be, uh, supported because we would be running programs simultaneously, uh, since the goals are very similar. Um, but there was some question on, um, whether that was sustainable or not. So they, I am here today to request a letter of, uh, financial support as an endorsement for the program to be able to give to DCED.
I guess we need to have some parameters or some understanding of what we'd be committing to. I, I, a letter of support is one thing, but to project, uh, support into the future of a financial nature is kind of, kind of unusual for us.
Right. I had requested that, um, if the, uh, support from the county would be two thousand dollars a year for-
How much?
Two thousand dollars a year for five years. Um, I think that would be a, uh, a great way of supporting the Main Street program and to demonstrate that, you know, you, you see quality in, in the programming and what we want to do moving forward.
Comment?
I have a numerous question.
Oh, please.
Okay, and I know you're the messenger, uh, so I, I, but I have some very hard questions that I need answered before I can commit financially. Uh, and some of those things start out with, I have nothing in writing, um, like the original, um, application or what the revisions are. I mean, I need an executive summary in writing, something that I have, that I can read. I don't do things just verbally. I get everything in writing.
Right. Um, I thought I had shared an executive summary, but I will be glad to send that along.
Appreciate. And the next is, what are your successes to date?
Our successes to date are, uh, foundation building. Uh, we've been doing tremendous of foundation building, uh, things that are not, um, full of glitter and glamour, but we've been doing some policy writing. Uh, we have been putting together committees to actually achieve the goals. Uh, being a organization of one, um, it, it makes it difficult to actually be in all places at all times, so I need committees and, um, people to support it. Uh, we have been very active in, um, meeting with property owners, business owners, trying to do some, um, quick, quick and easy kind of programming that would be helpful for the community, uh, for the holiday season. Uh, we had one of our own rising stars, Katie Trainer, who has been doing murals all over the, uh, the general area, probably tri-county area, uh, and she did the paintings on the windows downtown so it didn't look, um, uh, empty, uh, for the holiday season. We also did a progressive shopping card to try to get people to, uh, shop in the downtown, uh, over the holidays of, we had a thousand printed, we had a ten percent return rate, um, which, which was great for, uh, for just starting to promote that. Um, we are, uh, we've been working very diligently on, um, a campaign called Lebanon Made. Uh, we had a public meeting last night that was fairly successful. Um, and, uh, the Lebanon Made program is to promote things, people, uh, history, um, manufacturing of, uh, what is made here in the county. Um, obviously, my focus is the downtown, so my ultimate goal is to, um, get some of the makers perhaps to take brick and mortar in our downtown. Um, but if we, if we promote and connect, uh, our makers in our community, I think we raise all the communities in, in the county as well as, as in the city. Um, so, uh, we have actually several committees under Lebanon Made. We have an overarching committee. Uh, we have a committee who is working on a festival that we'll be having to celebrate our makers in June, uh, June sixteenth, um, uh, which is the Makers Fest. I've been working, partnering with the, uh, Lebanon Valley Council on the Arts to enhance, uh, First Fridays. Um, so that's a few things.
Okay. Um, thank you for that overview. It helps to hear them. And the next is, um, an expenditure report. Did you bring a budget to the, just like DCED, I have not seen a budget or an updated budget. I would like that. Um, and this is one of the tougher questions I have to ask. Was any of the money allocated to the bid used to go to court in the instance of the day reporting center?
No, that all was from the city.
Okay.
No, no funds, duh. Actually, the bid had absolutely nothing to do with that.
All right, so then, uh, the bid, did the bid, um, in any way survey business and property owners about their, if they wanted to see that plot, do you know?
That was before I came on. Uh, that was already in the courts and being decided by, I'm, this is all in the beginning of my twelfth month, eleventh month? Um, so that was already in the courts. Um, and it is my opinion, rightly or wrongly, that once something is in the courts, you should kind of step back and let, let that take its course.
That's perfectly understandable, but I'm, I'm just relaying questions that had been posed to me and I did not have answers.
Right. Uh, quite frankly, um, there's, I see no impact on the downtown.
Okay. And, and the bid is not, does not rise to the level of zoning, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
The bid does not rise to the level of zoning enforcement?
No.
Okay.
No, we, we work with zoning, we apply with zoning, but we are not, have anything to do with zoning enforcement.
Okay, I think people need to hear that again. And then the final question has to do with, uh, the one thing you didn't mention, mention was your cleanup of sidewalks and things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can you kind of outline where that happens and, and the timeframes it happens?
Um, it happens until we actually have frost, because once we have frost, uh, the, the litter and things freeze to the ground and therefore the machine cannot pick it up. It is, uh, these sidewalks within the bid, um, you know, roughly, and it hog-jogs, but roughly, uh, Chestnut Willow and from Fourth to, uh, Eleventh.
That's very effective, by the way. Very effective.
Good, good. I'm, I'm glad you see the impact.
Oh, yeah.
Um, the, uh, we also want to put in place other litter control measures, um, and perhaps a few more waste cans and, um, you know, work on some, some efforts so people don't litter.
Right.
And then we will also be, uh, participating in the, uh, the National Cleanup Day in, in the spring.
All right, well, the specific, um, instance that I was presented with was at one sixteen South Ninth Street, apparently bar? One sixteen South Ninth. Apparently there was a fire.
Uh-huh.
And there's, uh, it's boarded up, but there was broken glass and there's still broken glass on the sidewalk around that.
Right.
And no one has cleaned it up, and that was a concern that was passed on.
I, I have to say that the litter cleanup does not relieve the responsibility of the property owners in managing their, their property. It just aids in, in that effort.
I don't think we should be involved in fire aftermath cleanup.
No, no, I think that would actually create a whole different layer of liabilities.
Okay, well, thirty days have gone by theoretically, and it's still on the sidewalk in some respects. And there was a concern raised, and I'm simply passing it on to you. If you're not the proper avenue, perhaps that could be passed on to the proper avenue. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay, I will be sure to get a budget and an executive summary to you.
Thank you.
That will probably Monday, if that works.
That's fine.
So as, as you've survived the tough questions, how about a couple of softballs here? Your lighting and, I guess, you're talking, at least in the past, putting enhanced lighting downtown and those kind of things. Any progress on, on that and cameras, things like that?
No, the cameras, though, there is a lot of progress in the cameras. One of the delays with that was the bandwidth, so we had to get more. I'm, I'm not technical savvy here, so we had to get.
More bandwidth?
More bandwidth or stronger internet or whatever. That has been put in place, and actually the monitors go in on Monday, so that is quickly moving forward.
And the two thousand dollars you're asking, could we, if we were to agree to do that, would we be able to say, or to allocate that to additional lighting for safety or something specific like that, or is that?
Actually, the, the, the way the Main Street program now operates it. In the past, when I was involved with it years ago, it was a matter of, they funded the administration fund. And then the community would contribute to programming. Now it has completely flip-flopped, where they will support programming, but they will not support administration. So I have to demonstrate that other people will support the administrative funds. You know, but you could say, we are supporting the, in your, in your support letter, you could say, we are supporting the, you know, the administrator to, you know, conduct X, Y, and Z.
And what's your timetable for this letter that you need from us?
It would be great if I, I told them that we would have the revision back to them by the mid-February, so if, if we could have it in a week or so, that would be wonderful.
It would be two weeks.
For me?
It would be two weeks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bill.
I think the request is, is very minimal, and it makes sense to be spread out over five years. It appears that, and I know sometimes at the county level too, we get behind in, you know, getting these requests in, and I know the state, when they give you some information, then they want to turn around, turn it around quickly. So with that in mind, and I think the relationship between this Main Street project and tourism in Lebanon County, I would make a motion that the county commissioners commit two thousand dollars a year for the next five years from our tourism fund that we maintain as county commissioners.
Is there a second?
Kelly, I want you to know that I am not against this proposal. However, I don't believe in getting the cart before the horse, and I would like to see the things that I asked for before I participate in an affirmative vote.
Is there a second?
Not this time.
I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved.
I, I will still.
Oh, sure.
For that you get that information.
I think you gave us a pretty good overview, and I'm satisfied that the quality's there, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ames.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seek a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Stand adjourned?